One time here to get you some gavel. So I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:10 p.m. And I would ask everyone to rise and call Park Ridge Voice Cup Troop 76. Please present your colors and lead us into the next meeting.
Color guard attention. Color guard for march. Please present the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just, with liberty and justice for all.
Will please post the colors. Color guard return our rings for march. Color guards to choose. Maybe see them.
All right, good evening, everyone. So the purpose of this meeting is to inform the electorate of our township's financial status and to act upon certain resolutions to be presented at this meeting. But first, I'd like to introduce my most efficient staff, my deputy clerks Jessica Guzman. Jessica, where are you? And this is our departmentary of Ted Ryder. And Chief Deputy Clerk Ava Magnoski, where are you? These employees are responsible for making my office operate so smoothly, and I appreciate each and every one of them and the job that they do. I'm proud to announce that in 2022-2023 fiscal year, our office processed 1,868 passport applications, which generated $45,739.77 in revenue for the township. Of that, we're very proud to every year's support on our Flight Chicago by dedicating 1,000 of the yearly revenue from our passport processing fees to that wonderful cause. Some of the other clerks' office statistics are as follows. We sent and distributed 2014 neighbor-to-neighbor welcome letters, distributed 28 informational packages, signed 240 public notaries, submitted 162 reduced ride free bus pass applications, sold 111 hunting and fishing licenses, we registered 13 new voters, and in the township we have a total of 94,811 registered voters to date in our township. We issued 14 handicap parking cards, sold 98 mainline taxi tickets, sold 1,769 yard waste bags. And we're very excited to announce that in the next couple of months, we plan to add a new service, which will be the sale of license plate renewal stickers for the state of Illinois. The sale start date will be announced on Main Township's website and our social media platforms very shortly. We've been working very hard over the past few months to update and improve the clerk's website by adding information about our services. We created easy access to the additional websites and applications related to these services. On August 2nd in 2022, after two long years off, National Night Out Against Crime took place at De Park. It was again very successful, well-attended event with lots of fun activities and great prizes. I would like to invite everybody to the next National Night Out, which will be held this coming August 1st, Tuesday, again at De Park. And then finally, the clerk's office provides both Polish and Spanish translation assistance service to our residents in all the different departments of the township. Again, I prove how hard my staff works on a daily basis, and I thank you all. Now I'd like to introduce your elected officials, starting with the trustees. We have the Honorable Kimberly Jones. The Honorable Kelly Horvath. The Honorable James Maher. And the Honorable Asa Malik. Our Highway Commissioner, the Honorable Ed DuBey. And I don't think she's here with us tonight, but we also have the Honorable Susan Moncrief, who is our assessor. And last, and certainly not least, our Supervisor Karen Dyne. So the first order of business for the evening would be to select a moderator. And for this, I recognize Trustee Kelly Horvath for the purpose of making a nomination.
I am nominating the Honorable Laura Orpiz, State Senator of the 20th District Service Moderator of the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, can you show by vote of your card? Motion carries. So I'd ask State Senator Murphy to please come up and be sworn in. You know this girl. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and personally discharge the duties.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and personally discharge the duties.
A moderator at this town meeting, so help me God.
As moderator of this town meeting, so help me God.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm really honored to be here with you this evening, so thanks so much. So we're going to start with appointing a parliamentarian, and that we would like to make a point, I'd like to appoint Main Township Trustee Tim Maher. Mr. Maher, would you like to come up? Thank you, and then we're going to start the season with old business. So clerk to your lamas, would you like to present the 2022 Annual Town Hall Meeting?
Certainly. The 2022 Annual Town Meeting minutes have been distributed prior to the meeting. I ask for the reading of these minutes to be waived, if the minutes be approved, it has something to do with it.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So hold.
Second?
Second.
Good. All in favor, signify or raise in your card. Any opposed? Say none, motion passes. Any additional corrections for the minutes before we pass the motion? I apologize. Say none, then the motion passes. Clerk, were there any special board meetings held during the last year?
Yes, we held one special meeting. The special meeting was held in the fiscal year 2023, was on March 8th. 2022-2023 was on March 8th.
And are the annual financial reports for the General Town Fund, the General Assistance Fund, and the Road and Bridge Fund, were they distributed prior to the Annual Town Hall Meeting?
Yes, the annual financial reports were distributed before the Annual Town Meeting.
Now Supervisor Dyne, would you like to give your annual report and introduce the township's staff that made the clocks run here?
Thank you very much. Senator Murphy, good evening, everyone, and welcome Main Township's annual meeting. Earlier this evening, we unveiled a landmark plaque that has been awarded to this building and acknowledged its long-term architectural and historical significance. Though while the building has been here for 60 years, the township itself has been serving the community for 173 years. As we know, the Illinois Constitution of 1848 gave voters in each county the opportunity to adopt township government, and our township began operation in 1850. So Main Township has been a fixture of this area for longer than any other local government body. I'm proud and honored to serve as the current supervisor of a government body that has been serving its residents for so long. I also want to point out that because we're observing the designation of our building as a landmark this evening, we also have as a guest Dr. Robert Phillips, who is here today, and he's brought a collection of information with him about the township, so I think he'll be there after the meeting to answer any questions about township history and the building history. But right now, I'd like to recap just some of the many services and activities that have been provided by Main Township during the past year, thanks to our hardworking staff, our volunteers, and our dedicated elected officials who are here this evening. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the various members of the different departments to actually come up here so you can see them, I don't have to turn around and look for them. And I want to, as they're coming up here, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about their department. And I'm going to start with the Assessors Office. So Sam and Ed, not here. The Main Township Assessors Office is led by Susan Moncrief, which I couldn't be here, and Liz Coy, the department has it, is also out of town. But I do want to mention a few words about them. They really have been instrumental in serving the residents of Main Township. This year, they assisted over 12,000 residents with their concerns and questions, and the residents truly appreciate the fact that they can get strong customer service here and the fact that they can talk to a live person without being put on hold for a long period of time. And I think that's one of the important things that we do, personal service, easy-to-reach staff members, people who are here in person and ready to serve the public every day. There were also 2,600-plus appeals filed for the residents, while exemptions were supposed to auto-renew, but there was a large group of residents that were missed and did not see their exemptions. The office acted quickly and completed a certificate of the year to give a revised bill or a refund check out to them. On the flip side, this year, over 4,400 permits were submitted to the County Assessors Office. Entering the permits timely and accurately ensures that tax revenue is captured and distributed to the proper municipality, so the tax revenue that should be paid is in fact paid. So the office continues to adapt to changing times and has done a great job this year. A couple of new things that took place this year was the Property of the Death Workshop, which we held over in the St. Beale Center, we had a huge crowd for that, great job organizing it, and also a Board of Review Workshop for residents, and that took place just about a month ago or so. So anyway, Sam and Ed, thanks so much for serving the township as you do. All right, now Marie, would you come on up here along with your staff? Marie F. Nuske's going to come up here. And as they do, I'm going to say that the Mainstreamers that continue providing township residents with innovative recreational and social programs, educational, informative lectures, computer classes, so forth and so on. About 1,300 households received the Mainstreamer Newsletter, and about 300 new members joined Mainstreamers this past year. And they host date trips, theater outings, boat rides, historical tours, museums, there's really too many to list. It just goes on. One, a couple overnight trips, too. One, the Mississippi Summer River Adventure, and enjoying the shores of Michigan were larger trips that they planned, too. And I just want to say that I, one thing about being, nice about being a little older is I can join Mainstreamers, and I've enjoyed many of the programs that they've held, so thank you very much. Marie, I'm going to give you a chance to introduce your staff members.
Okay, this is the Mainstreamers staff. We're going to start off with Therese Tully, the Assistant Director.
Thank you all. Richard, would you step up here right now? Richard Naett-Lions, heads up our Main State Department, and for nearly 50 years, Main State has provided high-quality mental health services and programs for everyone at risk youth. Main State continued their work, breaking down financial and other barriers, preventing residents from accessing mental health treatment by offering affordable, strength-based counseling. And all the rest of the Main State people would come up, too. This year, Main State provided over 2,000 sessions of counseling, and also established a partnership with Apollo School, which I think is really, really wonderful because we're sort of taking our services to where people need them, particularly students who might not be able to get to our building, we're going to them, providing students services where they go to school. Main State's youth programs provide young residents with even more opportunities to improve their social skills and maximize their full potential. Poetry writing, yoga, cooking, litter break, LGBTQ youth programs, and provided about 5,000 content and community programs. And I want to congratulate you on this year's garage sale. It was, there was a hiatus for a few years, but this year it came extra and made a record over $5,000 profit from the garage sale. So Richard, would you like to introduce your staff members who are here?
Certainly. To my right, we have Ariel Kowalcz, our Assistant Director. And we have Summer Zombrock, our Family Therapist. Our two program coordinators, Evan and Emily could not be with us tonight, but we have them as well to acknowledge.
Marty, Marty, would you come on up? Marty Kuh, he heads up our Recovery Connection Program. Recovery Connection's ultimate goal is to connect young adults who want to stay clean and sober with each other, as well as community resources, social events, and a network of peers. The goal of the community-based program is to support long-term variety, healthy lifestyles, and to assist young people as they mature into contributing members. Main Township continues also to fight the opioid epidemic, most recently by investigating whether the township can offer Narcan doses to counter the effect of opioid overdoses. And Main Township Recovery Connection has partnered with the Chicago Recovery Alliance to make Narcan nasal spray available free of charge to Main Township, so that's something that Recovery Connection is getting going through the year.
And I also wanted to introduce our peer support advocate, Nick Keneal, who's been with us for, I think, since six years, so.
Nick, you can just stay right here. Nick's main job is being Director of our Food Pantry. The Food Pantry relies on a lot of volunteers, and I don't think we could get by without our wonderful volunteers. And we've had a lot of changes in the Food Pantry this past year, physical changes with the help of our Maintenance Department and other members of the staff. We remodeled the pantry, putting in new flooring and new ceiling, repainted the shelves and the wall art, purchased a large refrigerator, provided our clients with items like milk, eggs, cheese, and meat that need to be refrigerated. Other things we've done this year was turn the outside shed, which is on the east side of the building, into an additional area with an extra freezer and fridge storage for the pantry out there. During the holidays, the Food Pantry distributed over the year gift cards of Easter, about 200 hams for Christmas, 200 turkeys for Thanksgiving, and so forth. And in the past couple of years, we've gone from about 120 clients to over 300 clients that come to the Food Pantry. We had started out with one volunteer, and I think you now have eight volunteers, et cetera. So we've also created partnerships with Melrose Park, Mount Prospect, Costco, and Displaying Spanira. And lastly, since June 2022, we've donated well over 1,000 Weekend Go Bags to District 63 for them to distribute to needy kids who are food insecure over weekends. So great work during the past year. Would you introduce your volunteer?
Yes, so I have eight volunteers, but the one that showed was a Bon Numan. And then we have Leo and Steve Armari. We have Carol Carlino. We have other Carol McFadden. We have Bella and Kiran, who are from Main East with special needs. They help me in the morning, three days out of the week. And then, let's see, who are we? Bobby Elscher, I forget about him. Oh, no, Sherry Drew, Sherry Drew packs the bags, actually. And now that is everybody.
Okay, all right, thank you all. All right, Kathy Savini, do I see you here? Oh, come on up, please. And this, too. So Kathy Savini now heads up our General Assistance Program, and Luz is her deputy. So I just want to welcome them both, both of them to their new positions. Both of them have been doing general assistance work for a very long time, but they're now moving into new management positions. So General Assistance offers, is offered to low-income individuals, pay part of their portion of their rent, food, utilities, personal essentials. General Assistance also assists people in applying for line heat, main lines, they help sell those vouchers. They also assist individuals signing up for Medicare, letting those people know how it works, and making sure they're signing up for a program that fits for them, and assist with public aid appointments in residents who are signing up for Medicaid, SNAP, and other types of assistance throughout the year. So they really know the type of benefits out there and what our clients might be able to benefit from. So thank you both for your work, and we look forward to the coming year with you both here.
We just wanted to mention our two coworkers that are not here, our Secretary Janessa Arango and Haley Reyes, who's currently in our department.
Thank you for mentioning them. All right, Mike, Sam, would you come up here and would you ask your staff to come with you, too? My staff have maintained the building for a long time now, and they do a wonderful job of it, so that all the other departments can function properly. Set up tables, put up chairs, over the years, both inside and outside, they're always on hand to open up and close the building on a daily basis and for many special events, and they know how to fix everything. So, and they also help out the Food Pantry a lot by picking up purchased and donated food on a regular basis and maintaining our herd outside, too, for the benefit of the Food Pantry. This past year, Mike himself oversaw, as he usually does, the maintenance of outside contractors who provide weekly landscaping materials, landscaping services in the summertime, and also the arborists who remove 14 dead or diseased trees around our property. So we're trying to keep our landmark property looking, looking good and looking healthy. And I think with new trees donated by the Highway Department, thank you, Ed, we're going to be able to replace some of those trees that were removed, so we look forward to that. Any of your staff members here?
Yes, Jessica Fox. Also, a lot of my staff is Steve Sisso, who was unable to make it tonight, and I would also like to mention the building monitors as well. We have Rod March and Robert Rosso.
All right, and then we have two other small departments, and I'm going to mention them together. They're two different departments, but because they've worked a lot together during the past year, I'd like both Code Enforcement Officer Nader Gazalan, Nader, I saw you. There you are. And the Office of Emergency Management, Edward Olwinski, come up to the front right now. So together, the two of them went through the building, the OEM building, and really did a survey of everything when I was in there, and it really needed a lot of cleaning out, and there were a lot of materials in there that were probably obsolete or outdated and had to be cleaned out. And together, they, you know, really did an organizing, repurposing of materials, and I think that was probably overdue, so thanks very much for taking care of that. While the current machinery in the OEM building is now fully functional and serviced, ready to be used by the township. And over the past few months, a majority of your efforts have been focused on together expediting the process of getting some of the residents who were affected by the explosion and fire and Noel back into their units, and that had to do with getting electricity back on and the gas, and it just took a lot of phone calls and I think work with other agencies trying to get them back in. But those, those residents are back in their units now, and the next thing we're going to do is try and get all that debris cleaned up, get assistance turned down. And to help prevent future fires, Nader and Abby have had back proceeding with a resident smoke detector program, installing no charge, free smoke detectors in residents' homes. Finally, along with my assistant, assistant, Alicia Torzinski, Nader arranged for the sale through an auction service of two unused or underused vehicles owned by the township. That was the old Ford van and the Chevy Blazer. So that brought in nearly $20,000 together, went back into our coffers, and we don't have to pay insurance for them anymore. So thanks for doing that, too. Thank you both. So last but not least is our Administrator staff. They'd like our whole Administrator staff to step up here, too, please. I know there's a lot of you coming up. Dana Berman is our experienced administrator, served for many years at Township, and she's responsible for the day-to-day operations of the township. List of our department has that I've already talked to have reported to her, and she drafts the Town Fund and General Assistance Budget and Lettings, compiles the quarterly newsletter, has it printed, mailed out. This year, a great deal of her time was consumed by posting, employing physicians, interviewing candidates, and helping to select individuals who are a good fit in our township. So I'm going to let you take over and introduce the other members of the staff here, and you can tell a little bit about what they do, if you will.
Sure. I think I'll let them tell you a little bit about what they do, because they do some wonderful individuals. I'm going to introduce them, of course. So this is Victoria Rizal, this is our Deputy Administrator. You want to do a little sentence about what you do at your job? I'm on the spot. Hi, everybody. I assist our, hope assist our administrative team here. I handle our finances and ordering and other wonderful things. She helps out a lot. She's our HR Devilist.
So I do HR work, I do payroll, I do some of the hiring, interviewing, posting the jobs, I do employee relations, and all aspects of HR. And I helped in other.
Insurance, insurance.
Insurance, yes.
She helped with insurance.
Assistant Supervisor. Yes, and I help with Karen's needs, anything that she has for me on a daily basis. I'm also a fill-in for all of the departments, so whenever somebody sounds sick or just needs an extra hand, I'm there to help.
Jenny Raffney, she's our afternoon front desk reception. I'm going to skip over real quick. This is, I can't ever pronounce her last name.
Paula, Paula.
Yes, Paula, sorry, Paula. She does our morning front desk reception. One thing that we love about Paula and Jenny is all of our residents who call here, who come through the front door, are always greeted by warm, friendly voices who set the tone for the rest of their experience. They are just such a wonderful asset to all of our departments, helping with crowds, lines, making sure all those callers get where they need to go, and they are the heart of our township, they're the first people that everyone encounters, and we couldn't provide the wonderful services and support that we do without them doing such a great job every day. And last but not least, new to her finance position is Isabella Dubacik, so we welcome her to the meeting.
All right, thank you all. I appreciate everything you do. So I'm going to ask, Ed, may I just step up here now? And we will be observing some particular anniversaries that employees are celebrating, but Ed, if you'd like to just step up here right now and introduce your whole staff who's here, we can do that. While we do that, I just want to mention that in addition to the events and the programs that you've seen take place or that you've heard about taking place, we had really some special events this past year. A couple of events where we provided opportunities for residents to shred documents, to bring electronics in, to recycle them. We had dumpster days where people could even bring in their mattresses to get rid of them if they wanted them. We had the Secretary of the Attorney of State Mobile Unit ICAS Program, the Cyber Crime Presentation by the Sheriff, Self-Defense Plan was put on, Harvard Chinese Workshop offered by the North Suburb Legal Aid Clinic, and there are continuing clinics that take place every month. So, you know, I just think that really the staff has worked very hard, and has helped our elected officials who are here and supporting them at our meetings. at our meetings and discussing all the events that are coming up and working with us to make sure we have other presentations. So thank you very much for the Circuit Court Club presentation that you organized. And Kim, I know that you have your monthly meetings that you organize for the Neighborhood Watch too. So that's also another important service that we have. And Ed, of course, you organize this for the Taste of Park Ridge Beer Tubs where all the other officials are for you. So that's great.
He has his own.
So I'm pretty sure you want to introduce some of your staff.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Supervisor Diamond. I would just like to start by saying thank you to all Main Township staff, fellow board members, and elected officials for making this what we do possible and a lot of fun. So thank you. Regarding our staff, I know you guys are introduced last, but you're not last in my book. You guys are awesome. You do a great job every day. You know, we have a lot of you guys are celebrating, a couple of you are celebrating special anniversaries, but we'll get to that a little bit later. And I know that most people don't see what you do every day, but a lot of time, you're doing the work when everyone else is sleeping. So I really appreciate it, and I know the rest of the board appreciates it. So I'm going to start with my administrator, Dawn Hayman. And her assistant, Marissa Vindia, she's not here today, but she's, a few hours a week, she helps out Dawn, so. And then, of course, for our road crew, we have Pete Duvilakis, who's not here, but he's been longstanding head of our crew. We have Justin McIntyre, Rich Brandis, Peter Jimenez, and the latest to join us, Jerry Marisco. Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
So Ed and I are both going to hand out some anniversary pins. First, for the Assessor's Office, we have a 20-year pin for Liz Coy. Now, and also a 20-year pin for Denver Bemish. So I'm going to add the two. Denver, thank you so much for all your service to Main Township. And, you know, that 20 years is a long time. So thank you for hanging out there. Your job's not an easy one to do. It requires accumulation of a lot of knowledge about the county and the Assessor's Office and the treasurers and how they all work. And I think the residents of Main Township really benefit from having someone who's been here for such a long time and who's really been able to accumulate that knowledge and use it to their benefit. So thank you very much. We're going to accept this for this too. And if you would please share this with her when she returns. Thank you. And so I think Ed and I both want to give this award to one of our board members, Peter Duvilakis, who is 15 years. An elected official. So thank you very much. And we hope you'll wear this pin with pride.
I'll put it on right now. Thank you.
You forgot.
I was glad we had you on.
Luz, Luz, yes. Luz, are you still here? There you are. Come on up, Luz. Luz has been here for 15 years also. And. You do work in an area where it's hard to get on top of all the knowledge that you need to serve our residents. And, you know, I've tried to master that general assistance book. It's really hard. I'm just glad I have people like you who are here who have been here a very long time and know how the program works. So thank you very much.
All right, Rich and Justin, if you guys can come back up here again. We'll make you walk today. So just a funny story. 15 years, a long time. So I remember these guys when I was working as a summer help at the Highway Department years ago, and they were just getting started with their career. So like I said before, I couldn't be more proud of you guys. 15 years, that's something to be proud of. So congratulations.
All right, and finally, we have a 10-year pin for Marty Collins. Marty, congratulations. Has it time to un-mike quickly? Or? Thank you very much for hanging in there with us. Congratulations, 10 years of service. Thank you, moderator. That concludes my report. Thank you.
We start new business. I'd like to introduce some other elected officials in the room. And we have Senator Ron Millival, a colleague of mine, who now represents the Council of Public Services. And Woodbury Districting Representative Michelle Mossman. So welcome. We look forward to seeing you. Glad to be in the township. Now, I'd ask Clerk Gialmas to present the Karen Leder Memorial Good Citizen Award.
Thank you, Senator. And I'm going to go ahead and read my presentation from here because I'm at the point where I need both my cheaters and some light to read what I have hooked up. So I'd like to begin briefly by, like, a little background on Sergeant Karen Leder. She was a veteran of Cook County Sheriff's Police who lost her courageous battle with cancer back in 2010. Sergeant Leder was the Township's Community Liaison Officer from the Cook County Sheriff's Department. She was deeply involved with Main Township residents, especially in the Neighborhood Watch Program, our National Idiot Against Crime event, Special Olympics, excuse me, Special Olympics and Animal Rescue. She was also a resident of Main Township and dedicated to making the community a better place. I proudly have known her and have called her a friend. And I know she would be very honored that this year's recipient of the Sergeant Karen Leder Good Citizen Award is none other than Park Ridge's own Dr. Terry Collins. Terry was nominated by Dismalines resident Darren Brown, and this is what he had to say about Dr. Collins. Terry has given so much to this community for many years. She has educated thousands on the effects of drugs and alcohol and is a treasure to the community. As many of you know, what Darren is talking about is the fact that Terry is the founder and director of the Main Community Youth Assistance Foundation, or MICAF for short. As a community coalition, the mission of MICAF is to increase overall community capacity for advocacy, education, guidance, and resources for families in order to promote drug and alcohol-free youth. Terry and MICAF have been great partners with the township over the years, helping with numerous events, including our National Idiot Against Crime. So I know we can count on you again come August. That alone would qualify Dr. Collins for this award, but here are some of her other volunteer activities and accomplishments. She is a member of the Main Township District 207 School Board, originally elected to two four-year terms in 2015 through 2015 through 2023, and then just recently elected to a two-year term for 2023 through 2025. She sits on the Ascension Resurrection Medical Center Community Leaderboard. That's awful to say. From 2015 through today. She works with the Resurrection Community Garden from 2019 through today. This is a community garden based at Resurrection Hospital on Telkot in Chicago where they grow produce, which is then given to the New Hope Community Food Pantry for the needy. Terry is a volunteer and a member of Mary's Seat of Wisdom Council for Catholic women since 1995. Blanket of Dreams, an activity Dr. Collins started with the aforementioned group in 2001, which is a yearly 12-hour, one-day community blanket-making event where they have made thousands of blankets for the homeless. Terry made it on Saturday before Thanksgiving, so it could be a great kickoff to the season of giving. This will mark their 22nd year with the event. Some of Terry's other best volunteer accomplishments include being a member of the Dismalines Ministerial Association for eight years from 2013 through 2021, Girl Scouts of America for 10 years from 1995 through 2005, Park Ridge Community Health Association. She was a founding member and served from 2002 through 2012, and Park Ridge Police Advisory Committee from 2016 through 2019. And I think this is the first time in all my years of presenting this award that I've needed two pages to list all the activities to volunteer. It's for these accomplishments that is my distinct pleasure to present Terry for the 2023 Sergeant Karen Leder Good Citizen Awards. My friend, Dr. Terry Collins. Here is the plaque that goes to you, and then this is the plaque that goes, hangs in our front hallway. We have you added as this year's 2023 recipient. So congratulations.
So much. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I want to thank you so much. I'm humbled and honored to receive this award tonight. And I really believe that it's really in volunteering and giving to our community, you really receive more than you give. And I am so lucky to have received the friendship of many people. I've met thousands of people through these activities, and I'm really thankful for that. And so whoever says in giving is receiving is very true. I can't do this, though, without my family, who has put up with me for many, many years. Because as Pete said, here, give me some more activities. I was like, and they were all jumbling in my head. Hey, I probably could have come up with another three pages, but I'll spare you guys for that. So I want to call out my husband, Peter Cato, and my daughter, Katie Cato Asia, and my son-in-law, Kurt Asia. Because without them, without them, I could do nothing. So I thank everybody in Main Township, and I thank you for the support.
Congratulations, Dr. Collins. Can I just take a minute to comment? I didn't know that she was going to be the award recipient, but it didn't surprise me that she would come out and volunteer her time to be at a town hall meeting because I'm just the kind of person to be. However, when your daughter came, I thought, wow, she's really doing. Glad that happened as well. So congratulations. And now we'll move on to Supervisor Diamond to present resolutions for the approval of the electors.
All right, I'd like to present Resolution 2022. We move that it's hereby resolved and ordered by the electors. President, the annual town meeting of Main Township held this 11th day of April 2023, that the next Main Township Annual Town Meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, April 9, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the Main Township Hall, 1700 Valley Road in Park Ridge, Carolina.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? So you have, okay. Seeing none, no motion, any opposition? All of you, would you like to raise your pink card, supporting eye? Names? The eyes have it. One minute, okay? And the motion passes.
I'd like to make another motion. This is Resolution 2023, number six. I'd like to move that it's resolved and ordered by the electors. President, the annual town meeting of Main Township held this 11th day of April 2023, that the moderator of this meeting be compensated for her services in the amount of $75.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your pink card. Opposed? Seeing none, the eyes have it. Thank you. That's very kind of the Thompson. However, I'm just honored to be here and would like to donate this back to the food pantry and all the great work that you do there. Have we had any comments from the audience? Seeing none. Comments from anyone else? Well, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank you all for attending the annual town hall meeting. I'm really proud of the work that the township has done. There are a lot of issues that had occurred previously and, you know, caused a lot of financial strife and worry and concern. And it probably hurt a lot of residents that might have needed it. And then when you think that things couldn't get worse, COVID hit and we had a pandemic. And the thing about services that are provided from the township and general assistance and all the services they can provide is that when times are bad, the need for those services increase. And so I want to commend all of you for all of the hard work that you've done over the past, you know, six years or so. It's been a really difficult time. So thank you all for your dedication to the residents of the cities that you represent, to the township. And please keep up the good work. We're really appreciative of all that you do.
Thank you for always being a strong supporter of us at the township. It's not always the case down in Springfield, so it's nice that we know we always have an ally. Appreciate it.
Now, the best words of the night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
A second?
Second.
So all in favor, signify by raising your pink card. That's unanimous. So thank you all so much. Have a lovely evening.